Come on, somebody give praise to Jesus.
I want somebody to speak to Jesus.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
Come on, somebody give praise to Jesus.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
The Lord I want to see.
Where is she?
Open my eyes.
Where is she?
That I may see. Open my eyes. That I may see.
Where is she?
Open my understanding.
Where is she?
That I may understand you.
Where is she?
Open my eyes.
Where is she?
That I may see.
Where is she?
Open my ears.
Where is she?
That I may listen to your voice.
Where is she?
In the stillness.
In the stillness.
In the stillness.
In the stillness.
In the quiet place.
In the quiet place.
Right there, oh, let me encounter you. Let me encounter you right there.
Where is she?
In the quiet place.
In the quiet place.
In the stillness.
In the stillness.
Come on, somebody give praise.
Where is she?
That I may see.
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 We love you, Lord.
Come on, somebody.
That I may see.
That I may see.
That I may see.
That I may see.
Where is she?
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 That I may see.
All of you, Jesus.
All of you.
Where is she?
All of you.
Where is she?
All of you.
Where is she?
All of you.
Jagala kulabe, Yesu. Jagala kulabe, Yesu.
Come on, my help.
Jagala kulabe, Jagala kulabe, Yesu. Jagala kulabe, Yesu.
Come on.
Jagala kulabe, Jagala kulabe, Yesu.
Come on, you want to see.
Jagala kulabe, Yesu.
Jagala kulabe, Yesu. Come on, somebody give my hand to praise to Jesus. Clap your hands to the Lord. Clap your hands to Jesus. Clap your hands to the King of Kings. Give him praise, give him praise.
Give him praise.
Give him praise.
Give him praise.
Give him praise. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Wow, what a blessing.
That's a big salvation.
You know, I got reminded by scripture.
We are boy who live in the world.
There was that moment.
When the children of Israel were leaving Egypt. In front of them was the Red Sea.
And behind them. Guess what? The Egyptians were pursuing them. And they were pressing closer. And they were afraid. They were terrified. They thought it was the end. There wasn't any more hope. Nothing was happening. They knew it was the end. And then Moses stand and say to them. He said, "Do not be afraid." Stand firm. Stand still. And see the salvation of the Lord. Wish he will accomplish for you today. Somebody, he said, "He will accomplish today." Ah, he said, "He will accomplish today." No, 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 I said, "He will accomplish today." He said, "He will accomplish today." And he said, "Why?" Because for the Egyptians whom you see today. He said, "The Egyptians whom you see today." You shall see again no more. Come on, somebody, come on, somebody, come on, somebody. Come on, somebody. Say, "The Egyptians you see today." You will see them not ever again. And he says, "Why?" In verse 14. He says, "The Lord will fight for you." And you shall hold your peace. Marka satanabrago. Yes, Lord, we worship. Lord, we thank you. For your word. That you're delivering today. That as we receive the servant of God. Lord, she will minister in power. She will minister in strength. That the power of the Holy Spirit. Shall loom over this place and overshadow it. Come on, somebody. Let's celebrate the woman of God, Pastor Sharon. Even as she comes to minister. Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Yes, to Father. Hey, let's put our hands together for that worship. And I'm going to request. That we come closer. Let's just come closer, you can take the front teeth. So that we are close. Yes, let's just come forward. Come closer. Come close to me so that way. Don't worry, I'll not burn you. Yes, come closer, six number, row number one. Now, Dom, I want us to do this. Let's just all raise up our hands. It's just like we are. We are just dancing. And we are going to praise the name of our Jesus. Because the one of God says, "We are to." Gather in his name. Not to come and dance. Not to die, once you know, even when you're here. What is right here. So we are going to say, "Thank you, Jesus." Are we together? What's your sound? What are the colors do we have here? Like you like food, bro. How many are there? How many are there? Chelsea, Chelsea. So you know where you are. When your team has scored. How do you shout? How do you shout? How do you shout? How do you shout when your team has scored? How do you shout? So we are going to shout, "No, Jesus." Are we together? We are going to shout, "Thank you, Jesus." Are we together? Please, everyone standing. We are doing this for Jesus. I wish I'll turn that side. Do not be, you will turn the other side. I do this. I shout, "Thank you, Jesus." Are you ready? Are you ready? One, two, three, let's start. Thank you, Jesus. One, two, three, thank you, Jesus. One, two, three, thank you, Jesus. I want you to do it one more time. I know, one last time. I am praying to Dom. And I want to hear us say this. Are we together? One, two, three. Amen. My name is Pastor Sharon, I'm from. You not hear your part, Sharon. I'm from Washington, Nabi. I couldn't wash it, Nabi. I am from Washington, Nabi. I wish I couldn't wash it, Nabi. I have come alone, this is the temper to remember. I was sent by my lovely father. By the name of our pastor Moses. Who we call Rev Ma. They love us so much. So I am under instruction. I have come here. Let us just put our hands together one more time. Oh, yes, now you can have your. Please don't carry them to Congo. It is walking and it is walking. Behold, how good and how pleasant it is. For brethren to dwell together in units. It is like the precious oil. Running down on the beard. The beard of her. Running down on the edge of his garment. It is like the dew of honey. Descending upon the mountains. The mountains are saying. For there the Lord commanded the blessing. Oh, yes. Okay. The accuracy and accuracy, okay. For there the Lord commanded, when people come together like this. When you are praising, I want us to say this. When praises go up. Blessings come down. When praises go up. Blessings come down. So even when you're sitting here. I want you to know that your time here is not in vain. Your time here is not in vain. I learned Pastor Clarence was singing one of the songs, in my head, I'm like, "My God, that is, that is the one." And he did. That when you are, when you are sitting here. Good. To open your ears. To hear what he wants to tell you today. Because it is good for us to organize and to serve for three days. You might fail to get what God wants to take. So I want you to lean in. Open your heart. Open your ears. And listen to the word of God. Because it's because of his love. When God wanted to serve. His real life. He sent a person. And why? And because God loves fighter. He has set his servants. To come and minister to the people in this land. Because he loves us. Imagine if they said Jesus was coming back from. How ready are you? God is not there floating, like sitting in a corner like a police officer. What is Jessica doing today? What is Jessica doing? I want. Because she has done this, not going to punish her. God is not like a police officer. God desire is always to redeem. That when someone has not had the word. Let me send someone else. Can I send you to minister to my people? And when the word comes. Be ready to receive it. Because it is easy for you to miss it. Tell your neighbor, "God loves you." First turn to your neighbor and say, "God loves you." God loves you so much. Oh, yes. God loves you. That is one of the assurance I want you to go with. Just know that God loves you. It doesn't matter what has been happening in your life, or what you have been doing. God loves you. I'm going to teach from the book of Luke. This is one of the most interesting stories, I think everyone. Look, look, look 15, 11. Yeah, this is a story, this is a parable that Jesus was. Telling his disciples, just to demonstrate how much God loves. So this is what he said, "A certain man had two sons." And the younger of them say to his father. "Father, give me the portion of goods that falls to me." So he divided to them his livelihood. And not many days after. The younger son gathered all together, journeyed to a far country. And there wasted his possessions with prodigal living. So there were two, eh, two sons. One gave a daughter, "Father, daddy." You see me here, eh? "Give me my lands." "Give me my house." "I am of it." I don't want, like, what am I wasting? Give me the things that belong to me. Eh, let me go and, like, let me use them the way. Oh, yes. And he went. With what, because you know God is a. Like, God doesn't hold back. What belongs to you. Like, he gives you the opportunity to make a decision. The Holy Spirit is always there to guide us. To make the right choices. But in most cases, we go with our own selfish desires. Something that if it makes me happy, I don't care about the others. Me and my comforts. Me and my family. Me and my daughter. Me and my son. Everything, all the decisions you are making, it's just circling around you. So that is how we always make decisions. As long as it is good for me, I don't care about my name. And that is the kind of mentality this son has. Why am I here? I need that everything that belonged to the father is his.
And that is the kind of mentality this son has.
Eh ni chieki pidi shi, majana wobiye ni beru kure.
Why am I here? And yet, everything that belonged to the father is his.
Eh washuha, pera ngoma, ku pin shekema pa uwa ra sha re so di.
The land you are fighting over with your family members belongs to your father God.
No, mibe da okude ku, uh, family per no de uchieka mungu.
Why are you fighting over what already been to you?
Pera ngoma mibe dai we pi, ma ro uchie periro obu.
If God is your father, why are you fighting over it?
Ka mungu chie uru, pera ngoma mibe dai we piye ni ke.
But this is what, what was happening to this prodigal son, he said, give me what belongs to me.
Eh ni chie pinu be katimere ku jana wobiye ne washu.
Let me take it.
Mapara weka chitinge.
Let me take it.
Weka tinge.
And you find that you have wrongs that are not necessary in your family.
Man in wanguniandu.
Things that you are not supposed to be fighting about.
Pin manao be tumo dai weye, in wangube dai weki.
But you're fighting.
Manani be dai weki.
Because of anger, you find yourself leaving your home.
Nikum ngali shi ni luwekina isha.
You're leaving your passion.
I weko tukou.
You're leaving your wife.
I weko taku pe.
You're leaving your husband.
I weko shwari.
Because you are trying to satisfy a personal desire.
Nikum iba metite pom ye na perigi.
You are trying to satisfy your own needs.
Eh meti pom ye na peri kene kene.
And the father gave it to him.
Man waleme iku gishaka ye.
And he went.
Maneshi do.
Someone said, he went.
Na ti mo kuwa neshi do.
And he left.
Maneshi do.
And spent it all with prodigal living.
Man ela lo gishaka.
You see, when you are, eh, you, like, when you have money.
Inyo ka itiya posente.
When you have money.
And you're.
Where you're just spending, like, you'll have so many friends.
Man du ju re perinya.
Like, before we live and travel, like, for no reason, you know, like.
Danu be pi du, ma talabebe.
I used to have, like, there was a man. Okay, not the one sent for, but there was a man.
Ja lo ku.
He was so rich eh.
Eh be ru ku sente.
Like, he had money.
Eh be ru ku le.
Every time, whenever he would show up.
Ubankare, bakare tushka ma.
Grates of beer.
Ibinero biya nyaya merkeni.
Come, come and drink.
Ah, u pinu matu, pinu mate.
Yes.
Eh yo.
But it was the time, he lost, like, the money.
Pare pinu tush ma.
Disappeared.
Pare shekere winyo.
Even right now.
Karika woni ba washuke.
People, people used to esteem him highly.
Danu ma ki peru ka mi kere.
Now they dishonor him.
Ta wono ki, chiye mi tuku.
Like, when they, yes, because, like, when they look at him like this, they're like, eh? This man used, even, like, the people used to buy for their drinks eh? Even participate in the bank biting, like.
In wangota nu shaka.
You see, this man, he used to be very rich.
Oh, inero jadi dekona. My mokoshonisha.
Eh?
You look at how he is now.
Even Danu no has stopped, but look at how he is now.
Eh nen du kitene chieko de do ka woni.
So he went and spent, spent all his money with prodigal living.
La lo, limpare shekere.
But when he had spent all, all, there arose a severe famine in the land, and he began to be in want.
Ro ma ditu po de ngoma enu, mane ma koshepe do ku champagne.
You know eh?
Ina yo.
Like, you had all that money.
Ibe ru ku sente.
Now you are in want.
Ka woni do, champagne upe ne.
Then he went and joined eh? Then he went and joined himself to a citizen of that country, and he s- and he set him into his fields to feed swine.
Eh shi do, eh ribre kire, bangatashel, makintano mi ngomunu. Or ipo do pare, emi shamli kul.
And he would gladly have filled his, his stomach with the poths, that the swine ate, and no one gave him anything.
Man eyenyo, eyen ku shamu, ma kul usha mu, eh na ti mo ku mbembo mio ire.
Look at this, you have moved from a place of abundance.
Eh nen ya, i ayka beru ma pinu kong dur.
You have moved to luck.
Igami duwa ku ro champagne.
You had everything you needed in your father's house.
Ibe ru ku pin shekere, i otta wuru kusha.
Now you have moved to a place where you, 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 like, you cannot even afford your own food.
Ka woni do, i tush, i kare ma do, i sho buka noa.
And that was his story.
Eh ni be ru da fa jala wobiye.
So after him spending all the money the way he wanted, drinking it, people, like, he had spent it.
Inye ilalo limpare ma du, eh nyoto limpare shekere.
In all the wrong ways.
Iyore ma re shi shekere.
But one day, someone said, one day.
Na ti mo kuwanya ninda che.
One day.
Ninda che.
Tell your neighbor, one day.
Wa shni jirani peri ninda che.
One day, ha, he was like, oh, why eh? Like, I am here eating.
Ati fe nda.
Food with pigs.
Cha turu pegu.
And yet, my father.
Manu wora.
Has everything.
Uchie ku pin chekere.
Let me just go back.
Ah, weka no kibashu.
To my father's house.
I otta wora.
And be a servant.
Man weka beni ya tish.
Eh, let me just be a servant.
Weka beni ya tish.
And at least there, I will have some food to eat.
Du keshia, be loa ku shammita sham.
I'll have some little food to eat instead of being here, where I am.
Abi loa ku tish, shammo ku mita sham, du uloyu beru ka kay.
And the son said to him, fa, eh, sorry. And he arose and came to his father, but when he was still afar off, let me tell you, God is always waiting on you.
Weka washiri, mungu du be kurin.
It doesn't matter the decisions you are making.
Eh diangongo niya tamakani.
It doesn't matter where you are.
Eh diangongo ku no i be ru kini kani.
God is a loving God.
Mungu chie, mungu ma ma.
Ayarong, I told you to tell your neighbor, God loves you.
Amitwa, aweshiri, ya iwe ni jirani.
It doesn't matter the decisions you have made in your life.
Eh diangongo niya tamakani.
It doesn't matter how far you have gone.
Eh diangongo niya kiwo. Goru kani.
God loves you.
Mungu mary.
God loves you, and he is always waiting on you.
Mungu mary.
And this is what happened to this son.
Eh ni chena, mu chemra ni wotma eni.
That even when he thought.
Niya kida manange.
That he had seen so much against his father.
Eh tu ku, mi tuku tukongo ni wone.
His father, every day.
Wone ku bankare.
His father, every day was waiting for him.
Wone ku bankare beru ni pure.
Every day, he would be there.
Ku bankare be beru keshia.
Imagine your father, the one you eh, left.
Ke panya uuru mi weko.
Standing from afar, every day.
Kupankare.
When is my son coming?
Me washuka yo, wone ebe duwa kawene.
When is my son coming?
Wone ebe duwa kawene.
That is how God is always waiting for you.
Eh sha tiye ki tenwa mungu be kurin.
Asking, when is my child coming back to me?
Eh be penjre nya, anyati panbe duwa kawene bama.
In most cases, we say, ah, maybe it is a sin I have committed.
Kara mapuwa washi niu.
My sins are too many, God can no longer forgive me.
Mungu pa rania ya kaya sha, mungu sho puwe kira ngo.
God can't even forgive me, let me first one, lead myself. Let me first one, be counterpart.
Eh weka ten shiyo ku ma niya ke do ma len.
Let me first one, shave my hair.
Eh weka shinya ru ya.
I don't want even this rasta hair, I don't want to turn them off.
Rasta, rasta eh de, ah, ah.
Let me first one, eh, apologize to a wahu.
Eh weka chipoi.
Before I receive God.
Bambo ra jono, mo yesu.
But that is not what God is looking for.
Eh sha jengo pinu.
God is looking for that day you will just say yes to me.
Mungu be sao do ni, lo, mi be washi.
God is looking for that day you will just say, I am here, Lord.
Mungu be sao do iwe.
Because on your own, you are not able.
Nikum mi wi giri sho puwa.
If you think you are going to become perfect to receive Christ, forget, because you will not.
Kaipani sho puro.
On your own, you will fail.
You wi giri be po du.
On your own, you will not make it.
You wi giri, ibi sho pongo.
God wants you the way you are.
Mungu be meti ki.
God wants you in your weakness.
Mungu meti god.
God wants you because he knows that if you receive him.
Mungu meti nikumenge yo, ka ibi jole.
He is able to turn your life around.
Etu e yuba kalo ku kope.
You are able to become someone.
It, 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 ibi na ku ngati mungu.
People honor.
Ma taru biu yungu.
People look up to.
Taru pinenu.
But your story can change with God. And the beauty about it is Jesus is the equalizer.
Le mu nen tu chenia yesu.
Before Jesus, we are that same.
Nikum yesu wa jolo.
Before Jesus, we are that same.
Ni wang yesu wa chemaro.
Before Jesus, when you receive Jesus Christ.
Kari choli yesu Christ.
You all become royalty.
Usso, gamu do.
When you receive Jesus.
Kacholi yesu.
You all become perfect.
Usso da ku ma len.
Because he is the equalizer.
Nikum elre meketo aberu.
Tell your neighbor, Jesus is my equalizer.
Yesu tiye na ti ma keto aberu.
Jesus is the equalizer.
Yesu tiye na ti ma keto aberu ma ro.
It is not what you have done.
Uti engondo pinme timo.
See me eh, you people, see eh? If you thought you're the greatest sinner in this world eh?
Pa ru ya jadu gula osengomene.
Let me tell you.
Weka washiri.
There are people who have done worse things than you.
Danu ma ku te ma ki timu lema.
What is the hardest thing? Like, why is it so hard?
Pera ngoma du eh.
Just ask yourself, why is it so hard for me to just say yes to Jesus?
Ni washu, eh yo ni yesu.
What you, like, you want to die again?
Imi take a tough can do.
Were you there when Adam first com- committed the first sin?
Ibe ru keshan, kida madamu la ru du.
That you contributed, you said, okay, since Eve is giving the apple, let me be, let me give the apple.
Ibe ru katimu, di de mania, sha lebe miu apo ande, ibe ru cheneshi.
This is powerful. Eh? You contributed to the sin eh?
Yo inere.
But the Bible declares you a sinner.
Biblia uash.
The moment you are born like this, you are.
Ni ra jinyo likuma.
You are a sinner.
Itte dadu bu.
You and sin are together.
It ku nu bu, ibe ru kara shello.
Yes.
Eh yo.
You then cry like a sinner.
Na me ru.
Eh? You even be very selfish, you know, baby, that, like, when they just give birth to them, they're like, they don't care.
Inya uya.
Or my money wants to sleep, or my dad wants to sleep, for that, they will cry.
Pare, bi shaku yuwa.
Eh, those are characteristic selfishness.
Eh sha tiye, ki tenwa uya ti.
But Jesus, for you, were you there when Jesus died?
Inre be ru teke, ina mayasu ba to sha.
But he died for your sins.
Eh to pi du bu peri.
So why is it so hard for you to receive it?
Don, pera ngoma tek ni jono yesu ne.
Why is it so hard for you to come back home to your father?
Pera ngoma tek iri ni duwa ku sha.
Do you know that the devil is robbing you from the salvation that has been freely given to you?
Inye angongo niya joko, be ye ki kompo, ma ju mikremi manano.
You are being blinded. You are sitting behind. You want to be perfect, and yet you cannot make yourself perfect.
Ma ku ni sho buke, tiringo ni ebene male.
You cannot make yourself perfect.
Sho buka ke tongo ni ebene male.
The only person.
Ngatashel kende.
That can make you perfect is Jesus.
Don't blame, uchie yesu.
It is Jesus.
Uchie yesu.
Like this son, after he had left, the father, every day, was waiting for him.
Sha lo wotma eni kilo.
Even Jesus, even God, right now, every day, is waiting.
Yes.
That is why there is a whole crusade that will be organized because he desires to win that one soul.
Eh ru kato ju yu bo, kodi sha.
He kept running after you because he wants to save that one person.
Eh pinu du pinati mo ka shell.
But it is why there is one person who will wake up with a hunger to preach the word of God.
Kato ma ta shell, be beru kurie, yo mi ponju lepa.
Will go and stand in that market place.
Bi shida shungu sahu kusha.
And preach the word of God.
Mane be ponju, mane beyeru lebe.
Because there is that one person.
Nikum nga ti mo ku ta shell.
That needs to listen to the word of God.
Ni wejla pa mungu.
There is that one person.
Na ti mo ku ta shell kusha.
Who wants to commit suicide. But his life needs to be saved. There is that one person who wants to give up. Who wants to give up on his marriage? Who wants to give up on his children? Who wants to give up on his family? There is that one person. He will cause one person to hunger. To hunger to minister the word of God. To hunger to sing a song. That is how the love of God chooses after you. He is always chasing after you. He is always pursuing you. He is always desiring to see you. He wants you. He wants you daily. God desires to be with you. That is your father. What is holding you back? What is keeping you back? What is keeping you back? Why are you staying away from your father? You think when you stop drinking, you will stop singing? You think when you stop smoking, you will stop singing? No, eh, it will not stop there. But God has freely given us the Holy Spirit. That when you receive Jesus Christ, your life begins afresh. When you receive Jesus Christ, something starts to change in your life. When you receive Jesus Christ, something new starts to sprout in your life. What is holding you? Your father is waiting for you. Your father is waiting on you. Nothing should hold you back. This prodigal son. This boy, the one who had left, he came back and he found his father waiting for him. He found his father waiting for him. And when his father saw him, his father came running to him. He came running to him. He came to hug him. He came because he had longed to see his son. God wants back. God wants you back. Don't allow the enemy to steal what God has given you freely. Don't allow the enemy to steal what God has given you freely. Don't allow the enemy to steal your time. Don't allow the enemy to steal from you. Receive the word of God. Receive God. Receive Jesus. Because he is ready. He desires you. He desires you. He desires. He desires. God wants you back. God wants you back. You might not know how to walk this journey. You might not know if you do change something. Just say yes to Jesus. Just say yes to him. Tell God. God, I don't know how this journey will go. I don't know if my life will ever change. But I want to test you in this thing. I want to try you at the time. Maybe you walked with Christ before. Tell him, "I want to try you out." Father, I want you in my life. I want you in my life. Don't give up. Don't give up on receiving. Don't. The devil wants to steal from you. The devil, Aradu. The devil wants to steal from you. Let me tell you. You are strongest. You are wisest when you are young. But the devil pursues the young. The devil pursues the youth. And once he gets a hold of your prayer, you may the Bible says, "As the man thinks, so is he." The way you think in your head, that is how you are. And one of the things the enemy does is to control your mind. If you get a hold of it. But when, in a stage where you are supposed to think right, he confuses you and makes you go into depression. He makes you stop thinking about yourself. You are working that, at home, people are testing you. I don't know, like, things are just not working out. At the moment, he gets a hold of your mind. He knows that he has gotten a hold of one of the precious things. The things that would bring something great in your life. Refuse the devil to steal from you. Refuse the devil to steal from you. Refuse. God wants you back. God wants you back. Tell your neighbor, "God wants you back." God wants you back. God wants you back. When this boy came back home, my father was so excited. He told his servant, "You know what? Get for me a robe." Like, a purple robe. Put it on him. With, eh, what? A ring. God welcomes you like royalty. If you want your life to turn around, try God. Try God. Yesterday, I got myself into a, eh, okay. Yesterday, we were having an interesting conversation with somebody. The person had reached a breaking point. Where they felt their life did not matter. Because he had felt his family had betrayed him. That the wife, the children, his wife, he felt he had lost everything. Welcome your presence, welcome your presence, Holy Spirit. We thank you that you are here. We thank you that you are here. We thank you that you are here, Lord. We welcome you, Holy Spirit. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you that you are turning your life around. Thank you that you are doing a new thing. Thank you that you are doing a new thing in this world, Lord. I thank you, our King of Glory. I bless your name. 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 You are the praise. Hallelujah. Just keep praying. Just keep praying. You are the Lord. You are the Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. If you are here. If you are here, you have never made a decision to follow Jesus. That you have never made a decision to follow Jesus. I would just like to welcome just put up your hands wherever you are. Wherever you are, you can just put up your hands. If you are there and you have never received Jesus Christ, just come forward. There are people right there, very far. Please help me direct the people that are the other side. There is someone right there. If you are there, you have never met Jesus, Lord, of your life. Thank you to just come forward, please, Christian. Just help me walk them the same. There is someone at the other side. Just come forward, come forward. Oh yes, can you all put your hands together for the people receiving Christ? Eh, just put up your hands. If you are there and you would like to receive Jesus Christ.
...